Okay, is everybody ready? Okay, go ahead. We're streaming. Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is the August 12th, 2020, Community Consolidated School District 46 Board of Education meeting here at the Grayslake Middle School. First order of business is a call to order and a roll call.
Weedman?
Here.
Mack?
Here.
Brayden?
Here.
LaCroy?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Nash?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
Okay, so that establishes a quorum. Next is I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Miller?
I.
Jack?
I.
Mack?
I.
Weedman?
I.
Brayden?
I.
LaCroy?
I.
Nash?
Hi.
Okay. Next was the first opportunity comment. Chris, do you have anything so far?
I do not have any public comment on the Google form, and there's nobody in the audience.
Okay. Next will be board reports. Anybody have anything to report out?
Tamika, I know you have, I think you have something, so I don't want to jump on you, but I have one too.
No worries, the mute button likes to get lost on me. So thank you for that. Okay, I did have a slide up to share to kind of guide the conversation. I'm wondering if it will come over, so I will attempt it. If it doesn't work as planned, then I will go off the cuff.
Tamika, you want to share your slide with Chris Vipond? He can actually share it while you're talking, and that might be easier. So if you want to try to do that, we can have Christopher Miller do her piece, share, her sharing, yeah. Share with Christopher Vipond.
Yep, okay, we'll do.
Okay, so ironically, I have, also have slides to share, so I'm gonna just try to present. And if it doesn't work, then we'll go from there. So hang on. I don't think you can see what I see. No.
Well, Tamika is ready to go, we can, we can just keep doing this back and forth.
We'll go around Robin.
Does Chris have your things?
Not yet.
Not yet. I did, I did send them over. So while we are waiting for Chris, I will just start to kind of tee it up. So I had the opportunity in recent weeks to attend two IASB training sessions. The first one was around school reopening, communication and coordination, and another was with regards to ensuring we are listening to our student body at the board level, and how do we ensure equity and inclusiveness of our student population. So, Chris, you have it yet?
He's getting there.
Okay, all right. So in terms of the school reopening communication, one of the, the, the items that was really reassuring was that between the schools that were represented in the conversation, it was Plainfield, who was represented, School District 202. And then there was, so that was a pretty large school district, and then a more rural district that was represented out of, it's gonna escape me. Okay, it's up, yay. Thank you, Chris. So Todd Dugan, he represented School District in Bunker Hill. And so, one of the things that were really good to know, coming from both us, a large, very large, and small school, excuse me, school districts, were that a phased reopening plan is key to not look for the quick, you know, light switch moment where you just flip from remote to onsite, but making sure that you have a phased reopening plan, and that tethered to that plan, there are metrics that you're reviewing weeks ahead, and leverage that as lead time to inform your strategy. As, as cases are rising in the, in the region, using that data to remain agile and flexible with your reopening plans has been really helpful. And I don't know if many have seen, but just across the nation, there's been widespread reports in terms of just a significant amount of of virus being transmitted amongst students. So this calls to make sure that you do have metrics in place to evaluate, you stay agile, making sure that the community is engaged. And I know Dr. Glickman has done a phenomenal job, as well as the reopening team, in ensuring that there is a nice comprehensive set of communication that goes out to our community, as well as resources on our website, so that continues to be a key driver and highly promoted. One of the other things is, in terms of constituency, is just to make sure that the parents are engaged in the plan. So oftentimes, the parent's perspective has been represented by teachers or staff of the district, and layering in that parent view, and, and their recommendations call for making sure that you have parents that are not tethered to the district, other than their children being students there, partaking in that, in that coordination and planning. Another thing that was really interesting was around digital divide. I know when we were going into Y2K, right, that seemed so long ago, where we talked about the digital divide quite a bit, this is in terms of a lot of children just being first generation children with access to computers, and understanding that as a community, how do we help close the digital divide amongst parents to be more supportive during this time? So I know we have our family university in the community. Perhaps this is, you know, an area that we look into in terms of bringing in support staff to help, you know, provide not only student support, but parental or guardianship support during this time. A few areas of caution was just around price gouging. So the, the amount was just astronomical in terms of what the school districts were paying pre-COVID, to what they're paying for now. So the, the recommendation is go with your, your incumbent suppliers first where possible, but certainly be wary of price gouging, and start to anticipate for those things that you don't think about needing. So for example, cleaning supplies, or the, the actual solutions, right? Big idea to make sure you have plenty of that, not so much at the forefront of your mind, to make sure you have the spray bottles to actually disseminate that. So there was observations in like shortage of supplies to just be able to manipulate the supplies with, so awareness there. Also thinking about how do we leverage community partnerships. So in Plainfield, one of the larger school districts, going to replace the, the water fountains with the pre-filled dispensers. They actually partnered with a dentist in their town, because everybody wants to kind of have their item branded, right, to say that this water filter, you know, machine was donated by XYZ Dental Associates within your community. So think about how, where we need supplies, or we need support in converting things to be in compliance with the CDC guidelines. Think about how we can leverage community partnerships with our business community to, to help with that. Lastly, as it pertains to reopening, that I thought was important, was around compliance. And the, the attorneys have been really engaged in terms of how do you enforce mass compliance when you are back onsite, or in the case for us, where there are safe centers involved. By all accounts, it will be considered a dress code violation for both school districts. Only one of the two are considering self-certifying, the other will be doing onsite certification. And then, one of the things I thought was really important was because this issue has divided our community so much, you know, there's the health aspect of it, there's the financial aspect of it, with folks needing to get back to work. An example that was shared by the Bunker Hill Superintendent, I thought was really profound, where it's like, okay, put all of the COVID aside. If you feel like this is just not real, it's a hoax, look at it from the financial aspect, that if you don't comply with the CDC guidelines and mandates that are out there, that you are really putting, you know, the district in a position where, you know, there's no tort protections, essentially. And so even if you're not buying into it, look at the exposure and the impact that that could have on you financially, just as a constituent in the community. If your school district is found liable for not complying with the recommendation. So, that was really good. I'll pivot to the Equity Board Student Voice, and then if there's any questions. That one was really awesome. One of the, the lead-in points to that conversation was around imagining you're a board member, and you have no voice, you have no say, you have no vote. And essentially, looking at our students' voice as a key stakeholder in our, in our decision-making. So, you know, think, you know, perhaps is it a seventh and eighth grade like council, if you will, of students that can come in just to weigh in on how the policies that we are rolling out, how they are impacting them, how they are being affected by those policies and decisions that we're making to ensure that their voices are being heard, and also just in recognition that these are our future community leaders that we're training up at the same time. So a great development opportunity. Recognizing that a lot of the data that we get from state and local resources, building a lot of assumptions, and who better to have at the table to talk through the data, but the students themselves, so that we can get away from assumptions and more to understanding. There was a phenomenal section around highlighting diversity, equity, and inclusion, in making sure that the board stays centered to that and accountable to that, and certainly the students' role in making that all happen. And then lastly, that it really promotes critical consciousness, just to allow all of us to think outside of the box, how do we engage all of our stakeholders to really just drive value and benefit for our community. So overall, really good. Any questions?
Tamika, I don't have questions, but I loved the idea of the Family University helping parents bridge the digital, digital divide. And I really love the seventh and eighth grade council idea. I think that would be amazing opportunity for kids to learn how to be good citizens. I've had a number of adults say, why do you do this? Like, why do you do it for free? And it always makes me sad when people ask that. I'm like, oh, I thought that's what we're supposed to be doing. It's taking care of our communities. So I, I really like those ideas. I would love to think more with you about those, or anyone who wants to do that.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristi.
Okay, Kristi, go ahead, Lynn.
I have a comment as well about the, the student voice. So some of you may remember, last year, I talked about that really being a goal that, that I was hoping put together a likely seventh and eighth grade Student Voice Council. And I had, I said, you know, I even before coronavirus hit, I didn't feel like something I was going to be able to do last year. So I was looking at this year as being the year to work on it. But I was also really hung up with a logistics problem of having some students at Park and some students at GMS, and thinking, you know, I, I want to be apple, I don't really want to have them be two separate groups, I'd love to bring them together, but how do we do that? And it shouldn't just be kids whose parents can drive them after school. Well, suddenly, we are living in a platform where that issue has just disappeared. So there's a nice little silver lining for you. And I, you know, at the time, it wasn't, it was more a kind of a guidance for me in terms of, you know, that I wanted for them to be reflecting to me the things that we're doing, and I wasn't thinking about it necessarily as something for the board, but it hasn't been built yet, so we can build it together. And if, you know, if we want it to be something that the board is involved with as well, we should. We got the platform now.
Okay. Kristi Miller, I know you have something, so you might as well go next.
Okay, um, Chris, do you have my?
He's getting, yep, he's bringing it up.
Okay. So, I'll start with this. This is the Community Connections Team, and if you remember, Stephen and I were going to give a report at the last meeting, but we were not, we decided not to, because it was going, kind of looked like it was gonna be a long meeting. So, Stephen, did you want to start us off with anything, or do you want me to start? How do you want to, how do you want to do this?
Go, go ahead, I'll jump in if need.
Okay. Alrighty. So first and foremost, I want to thank the members of the Community Connections Team. As a review, quickly, Dr. Glickman asked if we would support the COVID response by coming up with some sort of community response. And Stephen had already worked with other people on previous boards framing up the Community Connections or Community Engagement Initiative, so it was kind of a nice, a nice tag team with that. And we started by asking the school principals to identify leaders in their communities that could help us make sure that we were responsive in ways that were differentiated across each school community. So I want to just name these people out loud, because they did amazing work. At the same time that they were navigating all the things that we were navigating, they took time out every week, and we came together and, and did some good work. So from Avon, we had Katrina Montando and Annie Schultz. Mark Tiplin came from Frederick, from Meadowview. We had Elizabeth Eversall and Cory Strebel from Park, Patricia Baking and Kelly Farmer, Allison Koch and Andrea Young represented Prairie View, and Denise Mack helped us out from Woodview. So those were the people that were involved. And the next slide I can tell you about our process. What we did was we looked at what the resources that we had available, and they all looked pretty negative. We had fear, we had rising unemployment, and the others that you're all more than familiar with at this point. And we decided to take those and reframe them. So focus, fear became a focus on food security and general well-being, rising unemployment became time, and limited access, all of those resources that seemed really negative, we were able to reframe those as something we could work with. One of the primary ones was we noticed that it was spring, and that meant it was planting season, and we knew food security would be an issue, and I'll come back to that. So once we reframed, we were guided by two questions, and those we came back to those over several times. The first was, what might we do to help our community thrive in the next three weeks, which kind of makes me laugh at this point, because we all know it's gone way longer than three weeks. And how might we amplify the intelligence of others during COVID-19? So once we we identified three initiatives and had some good results, and those are on the next slide, Chris, if you don't mind advancing. This chart shows a few things that I want to highlight. First of all, just the numbers that we were able to come up with, and these are really loose estimates. But more importantly, we came up with three initiatives, and then three pillars by which we wanted to measure our success. The initiatives are on the left, and they're the Grab and Go Meal Delivery, the Letters of Encouragement, and then the Companion Gardens, and then just involvement in the team itself. Across the top, we identified three pillars. One is sustainability, the next is collaborative excellence, and the third is equity. And you'll notice that equity is blank, because we really need some feedback and some suggestions from our, from our Equity Inclusion Team. So hoping we can get that from you as we move forward. So, just to highlight a few things, I won't go through all of them, but we had over 500 volunteers do something. Some did very little, they when I say very little, they spent little, like a small amount of time writing a letter, which was hugely impactful for health workers at Condell, for firefighters, both in Round Lake and Grayslake, and police officers, and elderly people too, in our community. Others did, committed to much more. So it was kind of a nice, a nice arrangement, because people could donate whatever time they had and whatever skills they had. So over 500 volunteers, we have continued to deliver produce to the Grab and Go Delivery Sites, as well as deliver meals, although that's going to come, that part of our work will come to a close now, but the produce will continue, and it's been over 85 pounds, and that's before the cantaloupe and before the cucumbers and the heavy stuff. That's mostly lettuce and greens and, and stuff, that produce that doesn't weigh a lot of, of weight. And then, and then we also had meals delivered, upwards of 50 to 54 meals a day at some point, and it varied depending on the schedule and depending on the week. And you've been abreast of those. So I want to hold, just hold this graphic for a second and put it aside for a minute. I'm going to show you a different graphic, because the question that we started to wrestle with was how do we integrate our work on the Community Connections Team with the larger purposes of the district? And this graphic has guided us. Chris, if you could advance, please. You'll recognize that there's, the mission statement is at the top, and then we've got the vision statement underneath. And then, Chris, this is animated, so if you just press the button, you'll recognize then some values. Stephen and I took our best shot at this that undergirded all of our work as we've listened and worked together for the last year, and then the three pillars. So again, Chris, if you don't mind clicking those, there's equity, collaborative excellence, and sustainability. We wanted to merge the results with this graphic, and the next, the next slide will show you how we do that. Except for the perspectives. We also, so backing up a little bit, we've got the three pillars, and we wanted to look at success through four perspectives. The first is our stakeholders, the second is the resources that we're using, not only financial, but connections, time, volunteer relationships, and then third, internal processes, and fourth, organizational capacity. Okay, Chris, now would you forward the next one, please? When we combine those two graphics, the one I showed you with results, and then the, the the triangle with the pillars and the perspectives, we come up with a one-page document that you'll recognize the mission and vision at the top, the three pillars are the strategic themes, we don't call them pillars now, strategic themes, and then the results that we were looking for. You'll recognize some of, to the right, some of the initiatives that we came up with, both the ones that were focused on the stakeholders, the Grab and Go, the Letters of Encouragement, and the Companion Gardens, but they're also balanced with initiatives that were more resource stewardship, internal processes, and organizational capacities too. So that's on the, the far right, measures are in between, but the left side is the one that took us a lot of time. And it can be read multiple different ways. If you look at the bottom, we wanted to increase trust, and the way, if you read from the bottom up, you can say, all right, well, if we increase trust, then we can do whatever it's, that oval is connected to. So if you're looking at trust, and we say, well, if we increase trust, then we can improve we can improve dialogue procedures, and if we improve dialogue, then we can improve the quality of connections, so it's connected to resources. If we can improve the quality of resources, then we can improve or enhance food security. So they're all connected in that way, and you can read them top-down as well. So if we wanted to enhance the well-being of, or we wanted, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this. If we wanted to enhance opportunities for engaging in meaningful work, how are we gonna do that? We're gonna align with the Greenest Region Compact. How are we gonna align with the Greenest Region Compact? We're gonna monitor the resources that we generate. How are we gonna monitor resources? We're gonna increase trust. So you can read it top-down or bottom-up, and that gives an idea of what we're doing, and it provided some focus that we know what we want to measure. So that is kind of where our work is morphing into right now, and an example, kind of a deliverable that we've gotten is in the next slide. One of the things we noticed was that poor Dr. Diaz, whenever we would try to get a mailing out, the formatting would get really messed up, and it'd be a lot of back and forth. And so Allison Koch came up with this process. She's got some background in marketing and communications, and figured out a really simple way to make sure that Dr. Diaz doesn't have to do that in the future. So that's just one granular example, but that's kind of where we're at now, is refining what we've been doing. So that ends kind of the, the report of what we did and what we've done so far. My question, so Chris, if you wouldn't mind shutting that down, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, that brings us to kind of what do we do now with this team? It's focused as a bit of a pilot. And Stephen and I, we've gone all over the place with how we want to use this next. I know you've worked on the dashboard too, and we've talked about whether we want this to be a board committee or not, whether we want this pilot to end, and we call it a day, or if we want to reiterate this and try again with the same members of the team, those members who want to return, and then look at, okay, well, what does our community need now? We're still in COVID, despite the three weeks, and how can we bring people together so that we can support each other during COVID? So if you have any ideas for that, or anything that you are wanting from us, it would be helpful to know. Stephen, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
No, the only thing I was gonna add is that I wanted to add my thanks to everybody that you listed on that first slide. We never would have been able to do any of those things without the deep involvement of the community. And I want to add thanks specifically to Kristi as well, because her ability to synthesize all this information allows me to avoid a massive headache with statistics and numbers that I always get. And just, it's, it's just been a pleasure to be able to work through it in a challenging time, and, and be able to see the community work together like that. So I just wanted to add my thanks there, and echo Kristi's statement just now about seeking additional information, and it doesn't necessarily have to, we can save time to talk with each of you individually, so we have more robust conversations. It doesn't have to happen in, you know, five minutes now, but just to get that, give us some guidance or some input on where we might take this next. It's very important to us.
Okay, so that's the Community Connections Team. I also told you I would focus on the Lake County Board, and I'll try to be quick on this. I went through the minutes from their last meeting. The revenue shortfall that's projected is about $50 million, and they continue to make cuts. They've just decided not to make, I'm sorry, they've decided to trim their budget by looking at three formerly paid holidays, and they are now unpaid. They're saving the county $1.8 million by doing that, so they continue to try to reduce their expenditures. And this, I thought, was interesting. The General Assembly has passed the Illinois Sustainable Investment Act, which requires public funds to be invested with due consideration for social policy, governance, and environmental policy. And they have adopted their investment policies accordingly. So I, I didn't know if we were aware of that, or if that's something we should be looking at as a board for policies. And then the last thing they're doing that I thought the Equity Team might be interested in taking a look at, and I can send it to you. They have decided to acknowledge significant dates and holidays throughout the year. Each month has some that recognizes and celebrates diversity and and encourages inclusivity. So, again, I won't read the whole calendar to you, but I have that, and I thought maybe that's something we might want to include in our calendar, or think about. And then the last thing is a book that was recommended. And then the last thing is a book that was recommended to me. So I'll hold it up. I don't know if you can see it. Can you see it? It's a terrible thing to waste, environmental racism, and it's assault on the American mind. It's by Harriet Washington and looks at the impact of, I'll just read this to you. It's a confluence of racism and other institutional factors that, and this is the important part, relegate marginalized communities to living and/or working near sites of toxic waste, pollution, and insufficient sanitation, and how those conditions affect cognition. I think that's related to the achievement gap, which is one of our goals. I think it might be something to talk about, given that Medline is going to have a facility in Grayslake. And given just the amount of cleaning agents, that some of which, I know that they're approved, but there also is disagreement on how toxic they are. And then also, on a more positive note, we know that air quality indoors has a significant impact on students' cognition and achievement. So I just thought that book might be something interesting if anyone is interested in taking a look at it with me. I would love the accountability of reading it with someone as opposed to just reading it by myself. So that's finally it. Thank you.
Okay. Christie Brady, do you have anything?
I am good, Jim. I have nothing to share, just thanking the other board members. Great, great content and info and ideas. Thank you.
Okay. Stephen Mack, did you have anything else you needed to add?
I did not have anything else needed to add. No, thank you.
Okay. Jason?
No, just a warning to Stephen and Christie that I am going to be reaching out with an idea for further work in the Community Engagement Committee. I have an idea. Consider yourself warned.
Thank you.
Stephen Strack?
No, but thank you for this excellent information, both, or Tamika, Stephen, and Christie. Thank you.
Okay. I, the only thing I have is I wanted to thank Elizabeth Neese and Jenny Klinka for the nice email that they had sent us after the last board meeting where they actually got about 200 to 300 signatures thanking the board and giving us some support, especially after some of the negative, very negative comments that were thrown our way at the last meeting. So I'd like to just thank them for their effort in getting those signatures. It was greatly appreciated. That's all I have. So next would be the Superintendent Report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Well, first of all, I too would very much like to thank Christie Miller and Stephen Mack and the entire Community Connections Team. You have all modeled true servant leadership in a way that any board would be proud of. So it makes me feel very proud to be serving with you, and thank you so much. And if we were together, I would be recommending that we have cake. We'll have another moment later on in the meeting where we also would want to have cake, but sadly, there's no cake. But thank you both so much for your servant leadership in this area. I also want to thank Chris Woke, who is on site today with Jim Weedman when I'm not there, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. But I specifically wanted to mention, you may notice that our friend, Mr. Woke, is not wearing a mask. And he did not forget, I don't want to get any angry emails that Mr. Woke forgot his mask. He didn't. I actually asked him not to wear his mask so that we could be specific about the fact that when school begins next week, some of our teachers will be teaching out of their classrooms. They are electing to do that. Some will be at home settings, some will be in their classrooms. And we have received the guidance that as long as those staff members are in their own class or in a classroom or space with the door closed and no one else in there with them, they do not need to wear a mask. The moment they step out of their room and they walk down the hallway, they need to be masked. So I wanted to let everyone know that in case you walk by your child's screen, see a teacher in a classroom not masked, you're not worried that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing because they are. All right. We have a lot of things to talk about because I'm not sure if you're aware, but school starts next week. And so Paul has a lot of things to talk about, and then he's going to hand it over to Stephanie. Stephanie will hand it over to Chris Woke, and then Chris will hand it on back to me. I have a bunch to tell you as well. So Paul, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Lynn, that was what I was going to share, that it's been really nice that we're returning to regular school business instead of all the work we've been doing specific to the remote learning plan. So today and yesterday, both Amanda Woodruff and I had the opportunity to meet 22 of our new teaching staff colleagues. So we had our new teacher orientation ended today. I'm very, very impressed with the group. It was difficult because we were on a Google Meet like this one. And usually, we're in our fabulous training room at Meadowview where we're all together and we can get to know each other a little bit better. We tried, we got some good feedback about all of it. Our instructional coaches spent time with them today. They are always rock stars and modeled some great activities to do on a Google Meet to build capacity, to build community, to build relationships with students. I was taking notes, and I know Amanda was too. We also had a riveting presentation about the teacher evaluation program by our own Mr. Woke and about our safe schools requirements for all the videos. And so we're always happy for that. We also had a very strong presentation about all of the technology available. So the entire tech crew came. Everybody was on the call so that everyone could get to know and see, meet all of the tech people. And so that was really amazing. Amanda and I tried to give as much background of the school and our processes and such, but it was really great. And I am only seeing great things with this group of, we had 22. There were two more hired today. I know Chris is going to go over some of that a little bit more. And already, our instructional coaches this afternoon were working with the people. At least I know for one of them for sure that Chris met with today. The instructional coach was already working with them this afternoon. So we have a fine-tuned plan here to get staff organized and ready to go. The other big topic that we're working on is our opening institute days. So we have three days next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We're being very strategic to give as much time possible for individual teachers and teams to be able to work together and to work with all the specialists, with the coaches, with tech support. And we have a pretty amazing tech rollout plan. So we know there's lots of tools that our teachers need some practice with. So our tech team, our informational specialists have been working hard this summer preparing really a wealth of opportunities for the teachers and the support staff next week. I think our criticism is going to be, I can't do all of them. I want to go to everything, and I'm going to have to pick. So one of the great things is that they've actually created videos on a new teacher hub that are going to be able to be accessible for teachers throughout the whole school year. So if they can't go to the live session, they are already going to have some built-in video information about all of it. So we have lots of different sessions planned over those three days, including Jabba-like time. So all of our content groups will be working on Tuesday, making any final revisions based on remote learning. So we'll be making those changes on Tuesday. We have dedicated team meeting times. We have time for all the different groups to get together. We also will have time for some training about the safe centers. So we'll be doing that as well. So we have a busy three days. Most of our presentations, as you probably know, will be recorded. So that teacher, on a Google Meet, we can only have 250 people on at a time. And so that's clearly not enough for the entire district to be together on one of these meetings. So including board comments and such will all be recorded. And each principal will be leading their own institute days in their building with support from the district office. So I've talked a lot about those two topics. Any questions or reactions? I didn't want to go too far because I have one more topic still. So the other topic that I wanted to share is that we have made great strides. The first thing that I'm very proud of is that we released our first-ever district-wide student supply lists. So we looked at building equity among and between all of the schools. So instead of having different lists for every first-grade class or building, we have one common list. And we felt that was much more equitable for all of our parents, that it didn't matter what school you attended, you were being asked for the same school supplies. So I had a fabulously hard-working team that came together and looked at everyone's supply lists from years past, and we made that modification. And so we, the school, supply list is broken into two columns. One of them is for items that we need for remote learning right away, for things that students will need wherever they're doing remote learning. And then when we return, here are some items that we would like for the return to school. So I think we were trying to be cognizant of costs and about availability of objects. So I think that was a really amazing thing that the district was able to do in the last two weeks. In combination to that, this, we've all agreed that we believe that there's some supplies that we have here at school that we should be sharing with families and students at home. So we're having, we're calling them student packs. And so each grade level determine items that we think would be critical or helpful or an encouragement for students to have at home. So some of them might be black line master kind of things, the black line templates, like with the number line or the hundreds grid or things that we would really want students to have their hands on and to be able to have at home so that they weren't always looking for the digital resources. Some of them might be some math manipulatives. We wanted to ensure that families had things like the counters at the youngest grade so that they could do some of their math experiences that we might have been doing at home or diced for games. So we were including a number of things like that. We also are sending home our workbooks and other materials. So every grade has a unified list across the district of things that we're sending. We have a slew of our PSRP and certified staff who have volunteered to come in and help us at the end of this week to start organizing. And then early next week, we'll be putting the final touches. We were happy that we were able to get things through our print center. So those were fast and furiously being delivered to all the buildings today and likely tomorrow still. So we've been doing a lot about the student packs. That's a new experience for us to put all those things together. And the principals in the buildings just said, we can do this. We'll get it done. We'll take care of it. It's important that students have what they need at home. We're not providing everything but a good supply of things to support students. And then Mr. Vipand and his technology team have been actively working to get all of our third graders and any of our new students, their Chromebooks, ready for that same day when we have the student pack pickup. And then he's been working with families who might need a temporary device for K2 for any of the families who might benefit or would need that before our real devices come. I know that the board, we shared that the K2 Chromebooks are delayed in their shipping, like probably every school is dealing with, with all of the orders. So the tech team said, we can figure this out. And they've been rounding up all the devices, making sure that they're ready to go. While they're not exactly the same, they're going to suffice for a temporary situation. So everyone around has been full steam ahead to get ready for school starting. I'm glad to address any of the questions that are associated with those topics.
Paul, nice job to you and the team who've worked just religiously on pulling all this together, especially again with the situation being so fluid. I wanted to say, you know, just the standardization of materials across grade levels has really created a simplification that I'm sure many parents would echo me that they just truly appreciate it, and it's going to drive tremendous value and cost savings for people at the end of the day. You know, sometimes it takes these, you know, bad events to happen to cause us to challenge the way that we have done things historically. And this is an example of how, while in the midst of something very unfortunate, able to deliver some real value back to the community and the students. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Lynn and I have been calling that one of our silver linings of all of this because we really did want to look at supply lists, and then this was a perfect opportunity.
Great job.
If there are no other comments, I'm very happy to turn it over to Dr. Diaz to talk about what the EL department has been very busy doing.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk to you for a few minutes about the provisional screeners for incoming EL students. So at the moment, we have over 80 new students, kindergarten through eighth grade. And we have three newcomers, new coming families who have registered just this week from Mexico, India, and Central Africa. So we now have 65 languages represented in our district, and there are 164 represented in Illinois. So we are almost 99 languages away, right, from a perfect linguistic representation of the state. That's exciting. But on another note, the state is still requiring that we have in-person screeners and that we will screen our students within 30 days of enrollment. What they have ended up doing is giving us a list of an eight-step process that includes an interview with a parent and then an interview with a student. And it can be virtual like this one or on the phone. And they've given us a script and some overarching questions where we kind of fill out a rubric. And then based on this, we give the student a provisional screening. So they're either low, moderate, or high in their English proficiency. And low and moderate would be any student who could, you know, low could be emerging, right? And moderate would be they're kind of using some technical language that can be about like the level three, if you're thinking of like WEADA. Six is the highest. And then high is a level four and five. So they're bridging and they're reaching. They're very similar to a monolingual speaker, monolingual English speaker. We're going through, working through our students as fast as possible. There's a really great team of four of us, five of us, who are working really hard to get these interviews completed. And we are, we are almost done. We have no, I'm positive we will get everybody called and screened before school begins. And what we have to do then is we will have to rescreen the students, though, when we are able to have in-person learning. So we are able to kind of give the students a provisional, like provisional standing, if you will, inside Infinite Campus and let the state know that they are going to be active ELs. But in order for them to become official, we would have to give them the in-person screening. So what we have found out is that WEADA, which is the company and organization that creates the tests that typical WEADA states use, right? Illinois is one of them, have created and developed and tested virtual screening for model, which is kindergarten, and then the WEADA screener, which is first grade through eighth grade. But Illinois has not accepted that. They still are really wanting in-person screening. So what we have decided to do, there are some directors in McHenry and Lake County who have kind of joined together because we're all in the same situation. And we are writing a respectful letter to the state asking if they could please possibly reconsider their stance and allow us the free virtual screeners that WEADA has already created. And then that would eliminate this provisional screening, provisional title, and will just kind of keep everything smoother in the area for the state and grants, but then also really for the students so they're not going through two exams. Does that make sense? Do you have any questions?
Stephanie, do you know why, why they don't want us to use the, is it WEADA? Is that the, can you repeat what that is too, please?
So WEADA is an organization, it stands for like world-class instructional design. And they provide tons and tons and tons of professional development. They're also the creators of the English Language Development Standards and the Spanish Language Development Standards. And they are also the keeper, if you will, of all assessments that have to do with ELs. And out of the 50 states, 37 of them are WEADA states. So we all take the access test. We all have the same overarching norms and standards, et cetera. Illinois is actually the I because it does have this whole world-class instructional design. But it's also stands for like the four states that designed it. So it's Wisconsin, and then Illinois, Arkansas, and Delaware. So it's interesting that we did not opt for the screener. I don't know why. I don't know why, honestly. Part of it is, could be, a lot of times, decisions are made on what CPS does. And then they have now sort of switched their educational model as well. So there's a possibility that So there's a possibility that they might say, oh, okay, well, if CPS is going remote, then maybe we could change our thought. Beyond that, I I don't know and I don't want to, I don't, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, yeah. No, I understand. I just didn't know if there was a reason. It seems odd that we wouldn't use free services, so that are effective.
Yes.
So can we as a board advocate for you in that arena through Ed Redd or Christie? Maybe I'm stealing your thunder there, but is that something we can do or no?
Yeah, I would think that that's something that we could forward over to Ed Redd and to Sarah. Um, Dr. Diaz, could you send me just a little blurb?
Absolutely.
And I can see what Ed Redd knows about it and um, you know, if they can provide any advocacy for us.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for watching out for this segment of our of our community. I think, you know, they're at risk um of a further gap from how we're having to move forward. So just really appreciate uh everything you've done to keep them moving forward and and taking care of.
Thank you very much.
Well, good evening. Uh, Paul kind of uh Mr. Lewis kind of shared some information that I was going to be sharing. Um, but yes, uh twenty-four new staff members, certified teachers were hired up until this point today. Like he's mentioned, there were two hired just this morning. And so um we are getting those spots filled. Um, at this time, we still have two vacancies. We have a one special ed resource position and a point-five band position. Um, so that we're still looking for. We've had some difficulties in some certain areas. Special ed is one, uh that's a statewide issue. Um, and then also EL and bilingual. Um, again, statewide, nationwide, um difficulty finding staff members. Dr. Diaz mentioned to you a couple of meetings ago um that due to some federal policies that were implemented, we were on track to have two teacher certified teachers come over to us from Spain. Um, they were not able to come. Therefore, uh we had to um pivot and adjust how we're looking at things. Um, we have two positions that uh an EL position and a bilingual position that unfortunately we had to make some internal moves. Moving our EL coach and our bilingual interventionist into those positions. While those positions normally would be supporting um our teachers and our students. Uh, we need them to be in a position where they're actually servicing kids on a daily basis. So that that's difficult um and that we've made so many strides forward. Um, and then now we have taken one back. Thankfully, just two weeks ago, ISB did implement the new policy to help us out a little bit. Whereas they've uh what policy, so the policy for what we call a type twenty-nine is if a teacher or an individual has a bachelor's degree in some area, um they can take a language proficiency test. And then receive the provisional license to teach. With COVID, a lot of those testing centers have shut down. So it's individuals who were going to be able to get in and take that test. We are going to be able to put into the classrooms um right away. That was looking like we weren't going to be able to get them until November. Thankfully, with ISB's revision, um we can uh do an interview to make sure that these individuals are proficient in the language that they would be teaching. I am happy to announce that uh you will be acting on one of our current program assistants at Frederick today uh who worked with us last year. And so she'll be um in the classroom this year as a certified teacher and she is ecstatic about that. And we are happy to have her, we're happy to have all of them, all all twenty-four. But it's great that uh we're able to, you know, bring up our own. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to let you all know. Um, so we have those two uh one and a half teaching positions out there still. Um, at this time, we are holding off on hiring some of our um PSRP staff, um our teacher assistants. Right now, it'll be difficult with all of the things that are going on, getting them in, connected with teachers, and then also having them learn the roles um that and how they'll be serving students with a remote learning process. So um that's, it's not to say that when we go back, we won't be hiring. You know, it will be a mad dash when we do get back to um in-person instruction to make sure that all the supports are there. But for the time being, we want to, we want to make sure that uh we can focus um and support our students and um, you know, work with our program assistants, teachers assistants that are on site with or within our uh district already. So that's what I have for staffing. Any questions?
Chris, can I just confirm because we've got the Community Connections team tomorrow and I'll throw and I'll tell them about this. There's two vacancies or two and a half vacancies?
Uh, one and a, one and a half.
One and a half?
Yeah, a special ed resource position.
Okay.
And a halftime band position.
Resource and band. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Lookman, anything else?
Yes, anything else, of course.
I was hoping.
Uh huh, yeah, I go last. All right, I have two topics to talk with you all about tonight. Um, the first one is our safe center for remote learning. And um I want to start by thanking our community um because the Grayslake District Forty-Sixth Community really did rise to the call. Um, you know that we were pretty clear with our community that this program um is has been built for people who really truly do not have another way to provide their children with a safe place to learn during the school day. And we ask people, please not to use it if they could have another solution. And people really did follow that request. And therefore, at the moment, we are sitting at approximately seventy-five students um in the safe center. And and one center, not not two, um which really helps us with our resources significantly. Um, so the families that have enrolled in the safe center, you're officially going to get information on Friday, but there's absolutely no reason not to share with you this evening that the safe center will be at Prairie View. Um, and I will talk a little bit later as to how why we selected Prairie View because there's some nuances there that are important. But what I want you to know right now is that we have the um the children are spread um, you know, throughout kindergarten through eighth grade. They come from all of our, all of our schools. Um, and the way it's working out just really in a numbers way is we're going to have our kindergarten through third grade students in um the library at Prairie View and our fourth through eighth graders at um in the multipurpose room. And we'll, we'll do some, you know, we'll, we'll spread them out in a way so that our fourth graders are all together right near the door because they come at a different time than our fifth or eighth graders come. So we're gonna, you know, we have those things organized. Um, we have a wonderful spread of staff, a great team of people um who've been planning and um and who have um volunteered to be to to staff that group. Um, every day, there will be an administrator on staff, uh onsite, a secretary, a nurse, and a health clerk. In each one of our large spaces, we will have a certified staff member, so a teacher, although I'm not somebody who has all-day teaching responsibilities. So that person will be there uh not to provide instruction actually, but really a supervisory support as needed. We'll have program assistants divided throughout the spaces. Um, one or more of our technicians will be there to help students with problems with Chromebooks. We'll have extra custodial staff. Um, and this brings me to talk about how we chose Prairie View. Um, because a lot of it has to do with health information that we've received. One of the um pieces of information that we have about what happens if somebody has a COVID-like symptom is that they need to go home. You know, they have to be first put into the quarantine space that we'll organize, but then they need to go home. But then that space needs to be emptied out so it can be cleaned. And in fact, if we can, it we're supposed to wait for twenty-four hours before it's even cleaned. Now, we don't know if we'll really be able to do that or not. But that brings us to why we're using Prairie View. Because at Prairie View, along with those two big gorgeous spaces I talked about, we have those four wonderful pods. And we can put, I think it was about thirty-five students in each one of those pods. So we've taken two of the pods and put desks in there as well. So that on any given day, if we have to send home a student from the library, for example, then all the students from the library are going to get up and they're going to move into one of those pods or maybe both of the pods, depending on how it goes. Um, so we are envisioning a lot of um back and forth between the large spaces and the pods. It's po- possible that we would use the other pods as well, but we are hoping not at the at for the time being, we are looking at those spaces being used for right at school. Um, so we have them set aside for that. So that's how we do, uh how we picked Prairie View. Um, families will be receiving a lot more information this Friday. The wonderful Irina Braun, uh administrative assistant over at Park has been unbelievable in putting information together and helping to communicate with parents. And so um she'll be sending information out with them on Friday. Also, we, we talked about the difficult situation that we have that we're going to have kids coming from all of these different schools and no time to really train them. And by that, I mean, there is no way to te- to show them all, okay, this is how you get lunch. Okay, this is the bathroom you're going to use. Because they will be coming in basically in two different shifts, about fifteen minutes before their school day starts. Will be hustled over to their spec- spot that will have their um their name on it. And there'll be a name tag, their schedule will be sitting on there, and then they're going to start learning. So for that reason, I volunteered to create a video. Only really, I volunteered myself and Chris Vipand. And then I started reaching out to different people to ask who's going to be in the video. So the bottom line is Tuesday afternoon, we are creating a video that will be sent home to families probably Friday, I mean, uh Wednesday afternoon of next week. Um, so that families can do it with their kids ahead of time. So they will see, this is what happens when we drive up, someone's going to come with a clipboard. They're going to take my temperature with this thermometer and they're going to ask me questions. And this is where I'm going to go in. And if I'm getting breakfast, here's where I get it. So we're going to take them through a day in the life. So that's the plan for that. Um, so that is all, so I have another topic. Are there any questions that anybody has at this time about our safe center for remote learning before I move on? All right, so um then I want to talk for a moment about a symptom screening update. And um I'm going to share this information through a little story. And it is the story of why I'm at home and not working out of GMS as originally planned. I would have been in that little room that Chris is in, um as I have been in the last few weeks or in spaces for the last few weeks. So there's been a lot of conversation at schools about that symptom screening that I've talked talked about and people needing to go home if they have any one of a myriad of COVID symptoms. And some of the guidance that we've received has been what to do if somebody has an ongoing condition. Because there are ongoing conditions that people have that cause those kinds of symptoms that can be attributed to COVID, but maybe are not. So for example, people who get headaches, headaches is on the list of COVID symptoms. Um, but some people get headaches all the time. What about seasonal allergies? What about seasonal allergies right now that cause sniffles and um, you know, and coughing? So the, our understanding of the guidance recently was that if somebody has one of those kinds of conditions, whether it's an adult working at a school or it's a student, they should get some documentation from their medical provider, keep it on file. And then if they have a symptom, there's kind of that understanding, yeah, 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 this, this person has allergies. That's why they're sniffing. So yesterday I had a physical. And I talked that over with my doctor because I get headaches. I've had headaches since I'm fifteen years old. And so we agreed that she would write me a letter, which she did. And I came into school today and was ready to go put it in my medical file. And my first meeting of the day today at eight o'clock was with Lake County Superintendent. That's a meeting that I have every week. You've heard me talk about it. Um, it's a group I really rely on. And for the past about month or so, every meeting, we've had leadership from the Lake County um Department of Health on that call. And one of the topics right at the top was this topic. And they told us, no, 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 that's not the right interpretation. Every time somebody has a symptom, they need to go and communicate with their medical provider. That medical provider might then provide a note for that instance, but first they need to go home. And they need to stay home until they have been symptom-free for at least twenty-four hours. Well, you can imagine that this threw our group into a lot of conversation because we have some schools that do have a plan to have students on-site for schooling in the next, you know, over the next few months. There are schools, school districts like ours that have a safe center that we're working on. And the idea that people with known um known symptoms would be needing to go home regularly and then get a doctor's note and then still stay home at least twenty-four hours after that was very worrisome. And we asked a number of times, what about those seasonal allergies? Because we know people with seasonal allergies, some people are never symptom-free. And the answer we got at that at the time, and we got it actually twice from two different people from Lake County Department of Health who weren't on the call with each other. So they didn't hear each other say it. Their answers were, well, tho- those people need to, you know, take their their medicine so that they don't have any symptoms. Some people can take as much medicine as they need, right, and and never be without symptoms. So this was very worrisome. Meanwhile, I had a headache. I had woken up with a headache, I had come to work with a headache. You've all been through many staff meetings with me when I've had a headache and you've never known it because people who have headaches go on with their lives, no big deal. I actually left the meeting at one point to go take some Advil for my headache. So I'm listening to all this, thinking, well, I thought I was just going to turn in my letter. But now I need to go home. And in fact, one of my teammates in the district office, who I had walked by four times, masked, of course, and found that person sniffling or blowing a nose, that person needs to go home too. That person has seasonal allergies. I need to go talk to that person. And so we both left. That's why I'm home and Chris is there. But there's a little bit more because I couldn't just leave. Now I had to figure out what are my next steps. So I called my doctor. So I'm not going to slog you through the whole rest of the day. It did involve lots of driving around and a two and a half hour wait in a parking lot. That's a story for another day. Um, but the end result was um I had a COVID test. Now, the best outcome is that I will get a negative um result. And by the way, this COVID site, um this, this testing site gives results back between a day and a half and three days, which I was thrilled to hear. So potentially, I could be back on-site on Monday as long as I haven't had another headache, which would cause me to be home for another twenty-four hours and could cause this entire cycle to happen all over again. Now, it is possible that um I made a tactical error because as I spoke with the doctor in this center, he said to me, well, maybe next time you should send, you know, e- email your own doctor through the portal and maybe that doctor will give you your note on the spot to say, it's okay, we know you have headaches. Who knows? Also, it's possible that I'll get a positive result, that maybe I do have COVID nineteen, in which case, well, I'll be really glad that I had a test. So, so who knows? My teammate who got sent home today with the um the symptoms of allergies, I don't know when that person's going to be able to return back on-site. That teammate is working from home, as I am. I mean, today wasn't, you know, I'm, I'm here, I'm working, I'll be working for the rest of the week, but I can't be on-site. So why am I telling you all of this? It's not really that I'm just It's not really that I'm just dying for you to know all about my headaches, although I'm not feeling all that, you know, private about them. Um, I wanted you to know because I wanted you to know what we're up against. Now, the guidance keeps changing. Um, at four o'clock today, we did receive an FAQ from the IDPH. And on this particular topic, it said, and I'm reading it for you, every symptomatic person should be evaluated by their healthcare provider on a case by case basis. And decisions to test for COVID-19 should be based on their personal health history. And then it goes on to say diagnosing, testing is strongly encouraged. So that's pretty similar to what I was told today, but it could change. And again, that seasonal allergy piece is very concerning. I want to focus for a moment on that 75 student safe center that we have. Students and staff are going to be in and out all of the time with their symptoms. And by the way, everything I just described to you also holds for family members. So if it were, for example, instead of me having a headache, if it was just my husband who was having some allergies, it would be the same thing. He would be going to the doctor and I would still be home quarantining while we were waiting for his results as well. Um, you know, it's lucky that we have signed, assigned enough staff members who will be at that safe center part of the week. And then they'll have other responsibilities for the rest of the week. So they're going to be able to sub in for each other. So in other words, we've kind of double staffed that safe center. But we hope we'll be able to keep it open. Um, and that the concerns regarding symptoms don't get in the way too much. And again, that is just for a small program. I um, I can't imagine what we would be dealing with if we were really opening onsite district wide. Um, during our superintendent health department call this morning, we talked about the importance of receiving metrics that will help us to know when we can open for onsite learning throughout the district. And we don't have those yet. I was told today we will have them on Friday. I don't know. But we also talked about the fact that there is this metric side and also the logistics side. And so everything I've just been sharing with you, that's the logistics side. If we can't keep staff onsite, we can't keep a program open. So I don't want to end on a downer and I definitely, I don't want anyone to worry about my headache. Um, I just really wanted to be open about what we're up against. So the good news is everything that you heard at the start of tonight's report. Everything that Paul and Stephanie and Chris told you. Our teachers are going to be ready for our students for remote learning and we're all really excited to get the school year started. And that's what I want to end on. But does anybody have any questions for me? All right.
All right. So we're up to committee reports. Do we have anything from the community engagement committee? I think we kind of covered some of that, right? Uh, next would be the equity and inclusion committee. Any comments for that?
We didn't talk about who wanted to talk. Lynn, you're muted.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, who's gonna talk about that? We had such a great meeting last week. Paul, you want to jump in?
Um, absolutely, but I just saw Dr. Mack raise his hand, so I don't know.
No, 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 I was just pointing in the virtual world. Go ahead.
Um, we had really, I, I always say that the equity and inclusion meetings are a breath of fresh air. Even though the topics are hard, we have an amazing group and we um, are able to talk about all kinds of things. I will say almost the majority of the meeting, we went through our opening up remote learning plan 2.0. Um, and we looked at all the different things that um, through an equity and inclusion lens. And so we tore things apart a little bit and we put them all back together and we came up with some plans of things that we want to talk about. We've already made some revisions in some of the things that's going out, some of the documents that are going out for students. Um, I'm just going to give you an example. So one of the things we talked about is when we have a Google Meet like this for our students, we are establishing um, under Mr. Viipon's guidance, we, we've created a set of district wide expectations for a Google Meet. Um, and we first were thinking about it and there were things like, well, if there's a meeting, everybody should have their camera on and everyone should be um, in a safe, good location for them for, to pay attention. We then had that conversation is that many of our families or our students um, may not have a private, quiet location in their home or wherever they're going to be. Um, and then there might be people in the background. There might be siblings or there might be other things going on. And then we also realized that our backgrounds that we show actually can show privilege. So the things that we have behind us or around us could actually be um, topics for kids to, to criticize other kids or to wonder about other kids. So we're actually, you know, really now encouraging when Google comes out with the ability to have a blurred background, we actually think that's a positive thing to have, be able to have students have a blurred background or have a solid color behind them or some kind of a background. While we still might put um, parameters on what the background could be because we don't necessarily, if you've seen the Zoom options, there's all kinds of crazy things that can be behind the person and those can be distracting for students. But that was an example um, that one of our committee members shared um, as an idea or a thought. Um, and then also the whole idea about um, talking, you know, about um, encouraging students to talk. We want students to be engaged, but we also don't know what's going around in the background. So um, they may not, you know, a student may not want to have their audio on at a certain time because of things that are going on at home. So even the simple things like that, oh, we'll have a set of Google expectations. Um, yes, but we had to um, go deeper and um, richer about that kind of conversation. That's just one of the things. We, of course, talked about the supply list being a positive step. We talked about um, the hotspots that we're um, making available first, for families um, in need of those kind of things. So we just were um, sharing ideas, talking about how we can make this better, things that we want to continue. Um, and then also we um, agreed that we think that for the opening day institutes, uh, institute that we need to have a message from the equity and inclusion. Um, and so Dr. Diaz graciously volunteered or voluntold or something that she was producing a video um, for the district from the equity and inclusion committee. Um, I know she completed it today, so we'll have that shared with all of the staff for some helpful reminders to give the why behind some of the decisions that were made. And I love that not just saying, we need to do this, this way, but why are we making those choices that um, that we've made? So um, I don't know if any of the other committee members um, want to share something, but it was a very positive meeting and we're, we're making impact on the um, policies and procedures um, in the school district with an equity lens. So that was our, that's one of our goals is to continue to do that.
That was an awesome highlight, Paul. I think the only other thing that I would say coming out of that rich discussion that I'm so appreciative for is that the committee um, is always challenging ourselves on our norms and just revisiting them to make sure, to your point, we understand our why, what we're here to do, what we're going to hold ourselves accountable to doing. Um, the work is exciting, the planning is exciting. And, you know, I think as we continue to mature in this space, um, we're going to really help to, to bridge our community through the work that we're doing on this committee. So thanks, Paul.
And I would agree. And I, and I, I had not been able to attend a few of the recent meetings, but it was really nice to be back uh, at a meeting. Uh, and just as engaged and inspirational as always. And I want to note, one of the things that I took away uh, was a couple of comments from committee members of the positive nature of the safe centers for remote learning as a, as an equity uh, tool for the, for the district as a way to um, make sure that all families have access to a safe place and uh, that they're hearing good feedback about that. So it's, the committee continues to do good work and uh, as, as um, you both have said, continues to challenge our, our norms and move us forward. So it was good to be back, Emma.
Okay, good. Um, next is I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Brayden.
Hi.
Nash.
Hi.
McCroy.
Hi.
Strack.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi, but I just have to say I'm very sad that Sarah Fitzgerald has resigned because she's an amazing math teacher and I will, my daughter has really benefited from her. So reluctantly, yes.
Mack.
Hi.
Weedman.
Hi. Okay, we're moving on to action items. Uh, the first one is a motion to approve Linda Mizwicki, I hope I said that right, as the pupil services coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the group? Nope, okay.
Weedman.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Mack.
Hi.
Nash.
Hi.
Brayden.
Hi.
McCroy.
Hi.
Strack.
Hi.
Okay, uh, next is.
Hold on a second. She's gonna hop on here.
Okay. We want to have virtual cake.
I assume we're next, we're gonna have a, a presentation by Mary for the 2020 21 budget.
That's correct.
That's.
Oh, there she is.
Hi.
Hey, Linda, can you take yourself off of mute and tell the board a little bit about yourself?
Hang on. Hi, so um, yeah, I've been in the district since 2008.
A presentation by Mary for the 2020 21 budget. That's.
Oh, there she is.
Linda, could you pause or mute your uh?
Off of mute and tell the board.
Yeah, Linda, you need to stop the YouTube. There you go.
I'm on, right? So um, yeah, I've been in the district since 2008.
Linda, you're on, but you can hear yourself twice because of the YouTube video.
Okay, so we don't want to make it too terribly hard for you, right? That feels, but uh, because, yeah, I, I don't want to put you on the spot. We're just having a, a sound problem, but we are so happy that Linda has been in the school district for such a long time, um, since 2000.
Like eight, 2008.
Um, and Linda has um, been in a number of positions in special education over at GMS, correct?
Yes.
And then, and I'm just saying this for you so you don't have to and we don't get that echo, that's all. Um, and then as a writing coach at, on both GMS and Frederick. Um, and I know that those um, principals are both very sorry to um, lose you out of that position because you're so extremely valued there, but really excited for you and your new role. So thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Oh, now we can hear fine. Who knew? All right, what would you say then before you go?
Um, no, thank you. I'm really excited to get started and learn all the things I need to learn. It's going to be fun.
Thanks, Linda. All right, we'll see you in a couple of days, tomorrow.
Congratulations, Linda. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Bye.
Congratulations.
Okay. Now, uh, next, um, Mary Worling will give us a presentation on the tentative budget.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present the fiscal year 21 tentative budget. And before we dive in, I'd like to thank Chris Viipon, who will be assisting me by advancing the slides. So thank you, Chris. I know you're out there. Next slide, please. Here are the topics we're going to, got it, there we go. Here are the topics we're going to cover tonight during the presentation. First, we'll review the legal requirements that must be taken in order to establish a legal budget. Then we'll review the assumptions on which the budget is based. We'll take a look at the outcome of the parameters that, on which the budget is formulated. And then we'll review what step, what steps happen after tonight. In other words, what happens next? Next slide. So what is the budget? The, the budget is the plan for instructional and operational services and are explained in financial terms through the annual budget. The budget's established based on expenditure decisions which reflect the educational programming goals of the district. And establishing a legal budget authorizes the school district as a public entity, first to spend money and secondly to levy taxes. During the budget process, the district strives to maintain a balanced budget as specified in school code and board policy and to main, maintain the fund balance as specified in the fund balance policy as well. Next slide. So where are we now in the budget cycle? The, the steps that have already been taken include uh, the approval of student fees. That took place in February. In addition to that, it was the approval of staffing that took place in March, I believe. Then in May, the board approved by resolution the establishment of the fiscal year and authorized the superintendent or designate to prepare the budget in tentative form. Where are we tonight? Tonight, the, the board is asked to approve a resolution. The Illinois compiled statute specify the steps that must be taken by the Board of Education in order to establish a legal budget for the upcoming year. And so tonight, the board is to review this tentative budget, accept the tentative budget and pass a resolution to schedule a public hearing on the matter. And then lastly, authorize a notice to the public about the upcoming hearing that will take place in September. Then in September, we do hold the hearing and that will take place on September 16. And we anticipate that the board will adopt that budget, will approve that budget. Once the budget is formally approved by the Board of Education, then it is submitted to the um, Lake County Clerk and to the Illinois State Board of Education. Are there any questions about process?
Uh, your, your slide says September 30th, not the 16th.
Nineteenth. Uh, we are legally required to adopt the budget by September 30th and we are scheduling the hearing on September 16th. So yes, thank you for that clarification. Next slide, Chris. When we talk about the budget, we often refer to it as the budget or in its entirety. In actuality, there are nine individual legal, legal budgets that are established. The school district's accounting records, budgets and financial reports are organized and reported on a fund basis. A unique fund is, is established for a designated purpose and each fund is a separate and independent accounting entity with its own assets, its own liabilities and its own fund balance. Now let's dive into the assumptions on which this year's budget is based. First, we're going to start by taking a look at the assumptions uh, on which the revenue budget is based. Revenue to fund instruction and operations for the school district is provided by three primary sources, local sources, state sources and federal sources. The first and primary source of revenue is provided locally. Property tax receipts represent nearly 60% of the district's annual revenue and are therefore the district's primary source of funds. A little bit of detail about the property tax uh, income since it is such a significant portion of the district's resources. As a taxing agency in Lake County, the aggregate extension is subject to a law, the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or commonly referred to as PTEL, and excludes the debt service levy. While the state legislature recently or at times has considered a property tax freeze or modification in the levy formula, this tentative budget assumes there is no change to the property tax formula for the 2020 levy. So we're assuming status quo, no changes to PTEL. Formal approval of the budget takes place every year in December and then it's filed with the, the county clerk. The 2020 property tax levy increase is based on the 2019 calendar year increase in the Consumer Price Index, which was 2.3%. Uh, so we incorporate in the formula that Consumer Price Index with the prior year actual extension, the property values that exist on our tax rolls, and, uh, the, uh, possible levy is calculated from there. This budget is assuming a collection rate of 98.5%. That's a little bit lower than the historical rate, and it's based on current economic factors within the community, um, due to the challenges economically related to, um, job loss and, um, small businesses in the economy in the community. And lastly, the debt service levy is specifically tied to, um, bonds that have been issued, and so when we issue bonds, the associated, um, levy, debt service levy is formally, um, planned for, and, and that is incorporated in the final levy extension. Any questions about property taxes? Okay. The next revenue item is the CPPRT, uh, also known as the Personal Property Replacement Tax. It was first imposed a long time ago in 1979 on corporations and other business entities. It was established when local taxing bodies lost their right to apply personal property taxes on business entities. And so now, this replacement tax allows the district to receive funds through CPPRT, and they are driven by corporate profit, profits, and associated Illinois income of those business entities. Because their profits are driven obviously by the current economy, we do expect a downturn in their outcomes. So for budget purposes, the CPPRT revenue is estimated to be $75,000 in this year's budget, which is 50% of last year. And if we receive new information from the Illinois Department of Revenue, which we commonly do in August, uh, we will update the budget accordingly. Similarly, interest on investments, um, are included in the budget also at 50% of the prior year actual receipts for interest earnings. Of course, as we all know, that we are seeing some record low interest rates in the marketplace, and so we do expect our income, uh, on our, um, cash balances to be significantly lower than last year. The next key area for local fees is student fees, and so in this area, the board approved student fees back in February for this particular school year. That set of fees, uh, that set, um, of fees that the board approved is equal to last year, so no change in the fees per student. Um, the board did approve a nickel increase, if you will, for, um, student meals. All other fees for summer school tuition or participation in extracurriculars and so on, um, remain equal to last year. Uh, we do anticipate paid lunch fees to be down, um, during especially remote learning phase, when students are learning from home. We have assumed receipts for student lunches to be 60% of prior year. Solar RUCs, uh, we, of course, are anticipating, um, income for solar renewable energy credits, or commonly known as solar RUCs. The budget, the amount that's budgeted in revenue in the O and M fund is, uh, $600,000, and this is specifically tied to our contracts. We have four, um, solar contracts, three with Comet and one with Ameren, and so when we look at that, um, those contract terms, we expect to receive $600,000 in income this year. The first, uh, billing will take place September 1st, and we expect to receive our first solar RUC income in October, and I look forward to reporting that to the board when that comes in. Next, we'll move on to state revenue. Um, evidence-based funding, as you know, in August of 2017, the state legislature authorized a new evidence-based funding formula. The, uh, EBF formula replaced General State A, GSA, and Special Education and the bilingual funding formula. Uh, the tentative budget includes the current year allocation, which has formerly been, um, um, adopted or funded appropriated by the state of $13.5 million, and that is equal to last year. So last year's base funding minimum plus the tier money because of the hold harmless is now our base funding minimum for this year. And as we've discussed, uh, last spring, the state legislature did not appropriate additional tier funding for the, uh, for this current school year. So we do not have that additional tier funding to take advantage of, which was about a million dollars last school year. Private, uh, Special Education, private tuition, and the transportation reimbursements are outside of the EBF formula and are budgeted separately, both are estimated to be equal to last year. Um, we have had a number of, we have had clarification from the Illinois State Board of Education specifically about the transportation reimbursement when we went into, um, shutdown closure, if you will. And fortunately, um, there were some waivers or leeway provided by the state related to transportation services, and, and, uh, those same considerations remain in place for this current school year. The preschool for all, or PFA grant, uh, we have received that allotment and we're, we're budgeting accordingly. The school project maintenance grant, the SPMG, was, um, it's a, it's a matching grant, and we had applied to receive this grant specifically for use for the Meadowview Roof. We did receive the $50,000 grant award in June, we do have two years to spend that money, and we are moving forward with our plans to, um, rebid, if you will, the Meadowview Roof because we deferred that project. We're moving forward with Adam Halperin and the World Architect Partners to get that bid out on the street, so we'll be coming back to the board in the next several months with, um, recommendation for bid award. As we've discussed previously, that this project will take place during summer 2021. In terms of the budget, what that means is a portion of, um, that project will be paid for before June 30th of 2021, and then the balance of that project will be paid for, um, in the next fiscal year, if you will, when it's completed in July and August. So I just wanted to highlight that the expenditure associated with that project is split across two fiscal years. Federal revenue, the, the, um, federal title funding is based on current year, oh, program allotments, plus I'm estimating $100,000 carryover, um, from last year for Title I. We generally receive that carryover, um, amount in October after all school boards have approved their budget, so we, we monitor what, what we anticipate that carryover to be and I'll make a plan from there. One additional change that is reflected in this year's budget as it relates to federal revenue is specifically IDEA funds. Those funds, if you recall, in the past were, uh, distributed to CDAL first, and, uh, CDAL would use a portion of our IDEA funds for our student programming, and then a, the balance would be then shared with the school district. The state of Illinois, per request of the federal programming requirements, have made a change. So now the IDEA monies are issued directly to the school district, and then we in turn pay CDAL for the tuition expense for our students who are placed in those programs. This year, the district will receive roughly $850,000 directly for IDEA funding. Also, a new element in the federal revenue category is the, um, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, or ESER CARES Act money. As you know, we've talked about this, uh, this $241,000, which was, uh, awarded to the school district, and we plan to use those monies for the, um, a portion of the expense for the kindergarten through second grade Chromebooks. That money, uh, was awarded, we applied for the grant, we expect to receive those funds this year, and we expect Chromebooks, um, to be here, I believe, Chris, that's the end of August, I haven't heard, August 30th was our, uh, initial ETA, if you will. And, uh, so we do expect these monies to be, um, provided during this fiscal year. And lastly, the, the, um, the revenue budget in the federal revenue category also includes a reimbursement per FEMA. So the, uh, Federal Emergency Management Association, once the president, um, declared the pandemic an emergency, that opened the portal for entities to apply for FEMA money. FEMA is a reimbursement of expenses that the district incurs related to the pandemic or reopening of schools. The reimbursement rate is 75%, um, it's, um, right now, at this point in time, we're estimating, uh, income in this fiscal year of $225,000. Are there any questions about revenue before I move on to expenditures? Next slide, Chris. Next, we're going to, we'll, we'll take a look at the assumptions around expenditures, and I'm going to show two slides regarding the expenditure assumptions. The first is what I, I call the, uh, set of traditional expenses or business as usual, and the second slide is specific to expenditures and investments triggered by the reopening during the pandemic. So first, when we take a look at, when we talk about the traditional expenditures or business as usual, um, the first key area is of course salaries and benefits. As you know, education is a people-intensive business, and as such, salaries and benefits represent 73% of the overall budget. When we're, when we're preparing the budget, as it relates to salaries and benefits, we first start with student enrollment, and, uh, student enrollment and, and student enrollment projections help us determine what our staffing needs are going to be for the upcoming school year. As you recall, the plan for staffing was presented and approved by the board in March based on this, uh, enrollment projection. The full-time equivalency number of staff in grand total district-wide is 544 people, which is essentially flat with last year, so it's within 1.5, um, FTEs of prior year, so essentially the same. The salary expense is therefore based on this staffing plan and, of course, the terms of the negotiated agreements and other administrative contracts. The assumption for the cost of benefits reflects the savings from the lower premium costs for the PPO, the, um, high deductual health plan, and the HMO, that represents a savings of $225,000. Then, of course, there are required contributions that the board must make to the Illinois Teacher Retirement System, TRS, and the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, or IMR. The next category of expense is professional services. The, uh, key areas in this category include professional development. Investment and staff development is ongoing during remote learning as well as onsite learning. The purchase service budget also reflects current contracts in place for transportation, student transportation services, student nutrition services, and lastly, the contract for custodial services. As you know, the contract with Durham for transportation in, reflects a 6% increase next, this current year over last year. Uh, Arbor, that increase, contract increase is 3%, and our contract with RRJB, which is on the agenda, um, later in the night, reflects a 4% increase. In the category of supplies, uh, we budget, uh, so utilities are budgeted in, as a supply, electricity, natural gas, water, and sewer, our budget is supplies in the operation and maintenance fund budget. The technology budget includes the purchase of the Chromebooks, and, um, as I commented earlier, that first payment will be funded by the, the CARES Act money. The other agenda item tonight for board consideration is the lease, and so the, um, we had to issue a new purchase order, if you recall, because the Lenovo Chromebooks were, were delayed and not available, we converted to the Acer Chromebooks, and so that's another agenda item for the board to consider, um, and that is reflected, of course, in the budget. Capital outlay in the Capital Projects Fund includes the plan for the Meadowview Roof Replacement. That was originally considered for this current summer, and we made the recommendation and board approved the deferral of that project to next year, so the, uh, expense related to that is incorporated in the budget. Then lastly, uh, tuition for our out-of-district placements. Tuition in total is $3.4 million based on our anticipated student placements. It's, uh, $2 million tuition bill from CDAL, and that's for 44 students roughly, and the private placements at a variety of other, um, institutions, that projected tuition expense is $1.4 million for 26 students. Any questions about these, what I call, traditional expenses before we move on?
Hey, Mary, it's Jason, I have a question, it kind of relates to expenses and then back to the FEMA reimbursement.
Okay.
What guidance are you giving as to what constitutes a reimbursable expense that's related to the pandemic? I'm just wondering how liberal or conservative we have to be in assigning something as, or applying for this FEMA reimbursement? If you could talk a little bit about that?
I, what I can share about the FEMA reimbursement is, is a very specific process. Uh, the, um, application is very, very detailed, where we're submitting contracts, evidence, um, dates purchase orders were made, um, specificity as to what items were, um, included in a purchase order, what is the per-unit cost, what quantity was, was, um, purchased, and so on, so the, so the requirements are very, very specific. Um, a lot of detail goes into filing this, um, application for reimbursement. In, in that entire process, there are guidelines, um, that give some indication of what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. Um, so one, what else shares, I think is somewhat obvious, is for example, the, the Chromebooks, that $210,000 is not, um, eligible to be reimbursed by FEMA because it's going to be reimbursed by the CARES Act. So there's no double dipping allowed, so that's very common when it comes to, um, grant funding, there's, there is no double dipping. In terms of, if we were to, if we were to encounter the need for overtime by our custodial staff, we would need to submit, um, details regarding timesheets and the benefit cost structure and so on and so forth, so, so it's a very, very detailed process. Does that get to the heart of your question about FEMA?
Yeah, I mean, I figured it was probably pretty rigorous as to what constituted a reimbursable expense, I, I guess I just want to make sure that you're being appropriately aggressive in pursuing possibilities, right?
Yes, and, uh, you know, we've been very intentional in, um, in our accounting for these expenses, and we've set up unique, um, uh, expenditure accounts within our general ledger. So when we need to demonstrate and prove, uh, what we spent in these categories, we can easily do that. So we're being very intentional, um, Jane McGowan and Adam Halperin and I, I have worked very intentionally to, to document it appropriately so that we can improve the, um, you know, the filtering of what's eligible.
Would something like the professional development needed for remote learning, would something like that qualify, and I'm just curious here?
I don't believe so, I'm happy to look at it, but, uh, it, it, it's, think of the Think of the eligible expenses as being more operational.
Yeah, and Jason, so the, some of the other things that you can apply for are like uh PPE, um shields for desks. Um UV lighting that kills the viruses. That you can take around the buildings and and disinfect with the UV lighting on top of the disinfectant that you've had to go out and buy. So there's a lot of those type of expenses that'll go towards that. Um I I'm taking care of it at the fire, on the fire department side, that's why I can say this. Um so like for, even for us at the fire department, we we were looking at, you know, if people have to work remotely. The the setup to be able to try and get that done, be it software or hardware or phone lines or whatever. Um some of those type of things that we can look at applying for. Um to to try and operate as a school district uh would kind of fall in the same processes.
That helps, and I'm satisfied that you're, you know, trying to consider as much as possible, yeah.
Yes, exactly, we're trying to maximize our possible reimbursement under the FEMA rules. And then you had a second part to the question, Jason, could you repeat that for me?
Uh I don't think I did.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, next slide, Chris. So this is the the second summary, if you will, regarding expenditure assumptions. And I wanted to isolate these expenditures because of the uniqueness of this particular school year. And I want to highlight that um at this point in time, and as we've commented many, many times, there's a lot. That is very fluid, at this point in time, uh the uh unique circumstances regarding reopening. During a pandemic um have triggered uh a budgetary need of roughly five-hundred-thousand dollars or a half a million dollars. Um I've aggregated these expenditures by fund. Um as, as I commented earlier, that each fund um is a unique budget in and of itself. So if we look specifically at the Education Fund, we've included two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. For anticipated additional legal fees, PPEs for nurses. The Chromebooks, and then additional food service equipment uh as we're uh needing to. Distribute meals in a way that we never have before. In the Operation and Maintenance Fund, we've included a hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars of additional expenses for. Possible additional custodial services, or possible equipment rental, for PPEs. For disinfecting supplies and equipment, and converting water fountains to water bottle fill stations. Then in the Transportation Fund, we've included an additional fifty-thousand dollars. For possible additional expense for midday kindergarten routes. And so we would need to add those, that tier of routing um when we return to, I'm being optimistic. When we return to onsite learning and our kindergarten students uh have half-day programming, which is different than the prior two years. In addition to that, when we return to onsite learning, there may be. A need to add additional routes and buses due to the need to maintain social distancing. So when we do return onsite and we're bringing students to school, it's likely that um. In order to keep kids safe, that we would need to minimize the number of students on the bus, so that may trigger. More routes or more buses, so we've allotted money in the budget for that contingency. In addition to that, the the, because there is uncertainty in general um about the school year. What, what will reopening look like in the first trimester, what will happen second trimester and so on, there is. Uh I have budgeted another half a million dollars in contingency across various funds. And this is for possible unknown additional expenses. And so the state budget format does allow for a contingency allotment in each individual fund. When the actual expense becomes known, we simply move or transfer those budget monies. From that contingency line item into that line item where it's needed. So, for example, if it were the Operation and Maintenance Fund, and additional PPEs were necessary for all staff and all students. Or additional disinfecting supplies, we would move money from the contingency uh line in the ONM budget. To the supply line in the ONM budget, and it's uh more efficient and um. And it's a, it's uh an important strategy to use during this time of insert uncertainty. Are there any questions about these expenses before we move on? Next slide, Chris. So, based on these sets of assumptions for revenue and expenditures. What, what is the financial outcome, what does the budget look like for this year? This first chart, this first table is a summary of what we call the operating funds. This includes the education, operation and maintenance, transportation, retirement, working cash and toward funds. And basically represents the financial plan for day-to-day instruction and operations. So in summary, we can see that revenues total forty-nine-point-five million dollars. Expenditures total fifty-point-nine million. Therefore, the result before transfers is a deficit of one point four million dollars. The net result after transfers is an ending fund balance of sixteen-point-seven million dollars. Which is thirty-three percent of expenditures. Next slide.
Mary.
Yes.
Hi, this is Tamika, if I could just maybe take us back a slide, I couldn't get off of mute fast enough, I just wanted to clarify, maybe you said this, so I apologize if you did. When you talked about the expenses, I just wanted to confirm, were you projecting those expenses at cost? Or were you projecting inflation and the additional premium put on supplies um during this time?
Uh and. The budget reflects all current contracts, and so negotiated agreements for salaries and benefits. And the um current contracts for our purchase services, so the key contracts are student transportation. Student food service as well as custodial services. As far as other expenditures, um we really budget what we know we need to purchase. So it's actual spend, actual cost of that particular item, whether it's a service or a supply item.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mary.
And I I I wanted to share that in terms of purchasing, um we, of course, follow the Illinois Procurement Code. Which specifies that as a public entity, we need to bid. Um we do have the opportunity through state statute to um participate in various purchasing cooperatives. Uh as a public entity, and that has been tremendously beneficial for the school district. It allows us to participate in a purchasing co-op where sup-. Supply items are pre-bid, and as a public entity, we can participate and benefit from that bid. And so these are, this is a competitive bid process. Um the Illinois State Board of Education also shared a number of, through CMS, through Central Management Services. A number of um uh co- cooperative bid opportunities that school districts could take advantage of. And so, given the timeline that we were all working towards, we found this to be extremely, extremely helpful. So I just want to highlight for the board that um probably all of us are receiving many emails from random vendors who. Are selling PPEs and and whatnot, please know that we are purchasing per board policy, per the Illinois Procurement Code. And taking advantage of the purchasing cooperatives, which um do. Do follow competitive bid process.
Thanks for that, Mary, I I just asked because one of the things that came up as part of that reopening, the IASB reopening um session. Was around just the the unexpected costs or. As it pertains to the inflated amounts of goods and services that were procured, you know, at one point in time are now, you know, ten, twenty. Exponential percentages higher that are throwing off budgets.
Sure, sure, I I understand that, we did see, we did see in March with the initial shutdown that there. You know, hand sanitizer, disinfectant and face masks were, were at a premium. And um fortunately, we did have a window of time we could pause and um kind of pump the brakes a little bit. And when we did lock into our plan for purchasing, uh we found that um the supply chain was in a better place, and therefore so was pricing, so.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh this next slide is a a summary of all funds, so this includes the six operating funds. As well as debt service, capital projects and the life safety fund, so in grand total. Everything um summed together, total revenue is fifty-seven million dollars. Expenditures total fifty-nine-point-five million dollars, and the result is two point, a deficit of two-point-four million dollars. The ending fund balance is estimated to be twenty-one-point-two million dollars, which is thirty-six percent of expenditures. Uh although the budget does reflect a drawdown of reserves, ending. Uh the ending result does show the district to be in a strong financial position with that fund balance ratio of thirty-six percent. Are there any questions about either of these two slides, these two financial summaries?
Mary, it's interesting that the projected deficit in operating funds is about the amount of. The foregone EBF tier increase, which, you know, if we were looking at a long-range plan, I don't think anyone would have. Surmised that that would have to be foregone, it's pretty unusual circumstances.
Yes.
Oh, no question, just that comment, thanks.
Right, and and I'd also like to add that that deficit in the operating funds of one point four million, realize that one million dollars relates to the reopening. So that the remaining non-reopening deficit would have been four-hundred-thousand dollars. Um so I think that is also something to be mindful of. Um I do think that this year is very comparable to the outcome of last year. Um we, the onsite audit will begin on the twenty-fourth, also a week from Monday. Um right now, what we show in the general ledger is, of course, cash basis, and so um. You know, we will report back when we have results after the accruals and are booked and all of that, so more to come. Okay, next slide, Chris. So, so what happens now, so the board is asked tonight to approve the resolution scheduling the public hearing. And to authorize the notification uh to the public of the hearing, and. The hearing will take place at the second board meeting in September, which is September sixteenth. So between now and then, the school district does have the opportunity to update the tentative budget. We can make adjustments to revenue or expenditures as new information comes in or as additional decisions are made. And so sometimes um during this window, we we may have an update related to state or federal funding. Um if there's something that we discover um related to student enrollment that then triggers a a change in staffing. We may be adjusting that as well, if there's something about reopening that um comes to light and it's in a, in another. Um unanticipated expense, we would make that adjustment to the budget as well, so please know that um the budget will continue to be fine-tuned. Between now and September sixteenth. Next slide. So to to sum, sum this up, um we talked about the action that we're asking the board to take tonight. Regarding the resolution for the hearing and publication. Then on September sixteenth, we will hold and conduct the public hearing on the budget. We anticipate that the board would take action and approve the budget. It needs to happen every year by September thirtieth, and um September sixteenth is our second board meeting of the month. After board action, we then have thirty days in which to submit the budget formally to the Illinois State Board of Education in the state budget format. And then file the budget with the county clerk, which allows us to levy taxes, so that's important. Okay, next slide. Any final questions as a wrap-up to the tentative budget?
Mary, thank you so much for this, I actually, I don't have a question, but I, just a comment, something that we as a board might want to consider. The reopening costs are a million dollars, and most of that, it appears to me, um is going to go in the trash, right? Like, we need it, I'm not saying we don't, but it's masks, it's sanitizer, it's, it's stuff that isn't a long-term investment. In the infrastructure of our schools, we might want to consider using our outdoor spaces more intentionally. Because it, those would improvements in outdoor classrooms could uh be long-term post-COVID investments. Uh that might serve us, or just something to keep on our, on the back burner if this goes longer than we anticipate. Because the weather will be pretty nice from now until October, um so just, just a thought.
Okay, anybody else have any more questions? Okay. Um so I will make a motion to approve the tentative twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget.
Second.
Okay.
McCroy.
Aye.
Brayden.
Aye.
Strack.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Mac.
Aye.
Weedman.
Aye.
Nash.
Aye.
Okay, uh next is a motion to approve, I need a motion to approve a contract with RRJB Properties Cleaning Service.
So moved.
I'll second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay.
Strack.
Aye.
Mac.
Aye.
Brayden.
Aye.
McCroy.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Nash.
Aye.
Weedman.
Aye.
All right, next is, I need a motion to approve the Chromebook lease, uh that's for the Chromebooks for the uh K through two.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody have any questions? Nope, okay.
Mac.
Aye.
Brayden.
Aye.
Strack.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
McCroy.
Aye.
Weedman.
Aye.
Nash.
Aye.
All right, uh next, I need a motion to revise the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Nope, okay.
Miller.
Aye.
Mac.
Aye.
Strack.
Aye.
Brayden.
Aye.
Mac.
Aye.
Weedman.
Aye.
McCroy.
Aye.
Okay, uh next is a motion to approve the board resolution advocating for increased funding. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Anybody have any questions, everybody was good with that?
Mac.
Aye.
Brayden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Mac.
Aye.
Strack.
Aye.
Weedman.
Aye.
McCroy.
Aye.
Uh okay, uh next is unfinished business, which we have nothing on the board at this point. Uh next would be new business, which would be the discussion of continuing with Ed Redd. Tell you, Christie.
Sure, um. Sorry, getting off mute, um yeah, I would, I would, I I'm interested to hear everyone's perspectives. It's been kind of a weird on-ramp onto Ed Redd because um we joined right about when COVID hit in the spring legislative session. Kind of was uh focused on uh other stuff. Um I think, you know, they've done a nice job advocating for, you know, what we needed this spring. I'm interested to see.
spring, and I'm interested to see, you know, what else we can do long-term moving forward. We were, Paul and I both asked to be on, they are forming an equity ad hoc committee, which I think is, you know, timely and responsive in terms of, you know, the work that we're trying to do in the district. And so I'm excited about that. Unfortunately, they scheduled the first meeting for a time that neither Paul nor I could attend, but there's a recording, looking forward to it. But, you know, I'm open to hearing other perspectives as well. I know, you know, with the budget that we have, we want to be really careful about expenditures, so also not, you know, not married to that being the most important spend right now, although I do feel a legislative voice is really, really important for us in the next couple of years.
What was the cost?
Three thousand for the year.
And out of the board's budget, right?
Yeah, it's out of the board budget, correct. Which, we're not going to triple I, I mean, this year, hopefully that's offset by other expenditures as well. Although we had it, it's not like we didn't have it, but also, you know, do not have, anticipate those triple I expenditures coming through this year either.
I think we, I think, I'm looking at it at thirty-five hundred, and I do know we did embed this cost in your board budget for this year.
Okay.
Correct, Mary? We included it. Yeah, we made the assumption that you were moving forward with it.
My only comment is it seems like it'd be a good worthwhile investment, especially at this time where they're really going to be out there advocating for changes in funding and policies and stuff like that during this pandemic, and probably fighting for us more than they have ever in the past. So to me, I would be okay with continuing.
Yeah, I'll add to that, that Sarah Hartwick is so responsive. She's fantastic. If you have any questions, she immediately responds. So I've found, I really like Ed Redd, and it's been very valuable. Cool. Yeah, Sarah's fantastic. You just, you feel like she's, you know, even though she's the executive director, you feel like she's sort of in touch, you know, in fact, I, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing what she has to say about the issue that Dr. Diaz brought up. I think those are the exact kind of things that we can see value from them on.
Kristy, I'm just going back and forth, just in terms of cost, you know, just wanting to be prudent, extra prudent with resources right now, and wondering if we have the capability to be within Ed Redd's wind, if you will. So can we get the savings, right, but recognize that we're at an inflection point, right, where there's, there is just a movement towards, you know, driving more equity and lobbying for investments in our schools and infrastructure and children and such. And can we hit pause and, if you will, ride the wave, recognizing that many others like us will be bringing, from the Ed Redd community, will be pushing this, and then can we just kind of ride the wind? I don't know, but that's kind of where I'm kind of bouncing between right now.
Yeah, I think that's, I guess the other perspective would be if everyone rode the wind, there wouldn't be an Ed Redd, so.
That's true.
You know?
That is true.
But I hear you.
Yeah, and I'm with you, you know, I can see both sides of it. I guess, you know, coming off of, you know, Mary's presentation, you know, it's kind of tough act to follow.
I want us to be really intentional about it and not just assume that it's something we should do, and I appreciate that perspective, Tamika. I agree, if we say yes to it, I think once, we want it to be an informed yes, and not just an assumption, assumptive yes. I'm just curious, how do you, how do we think we want to use it moving forward? Because we were kind of getting our feet wet with it this year. Yep. Is there a way to leverage it so that we do get a little more bang for our buck? Yeah, I would say two things. One is just exactly the way that I think we have done, which is saying, hey, this is rising up, this is an issue for us, let's shoot it over to Sarah, make sure that it's on, you know, their radar screen. And then I would say the second thing is, you know, the good thing about the meetings being virtual is that anyone on the board or on the district staff is welcome to join, and I know some of you have joined those meetings. And so, you know, leveraging the fact that we don't all have to go to Main West High School on a Friday at noon to participate, so we can actually, you know, more people can get the value out of it as well.
Anybody have any other questions? Do we feel good about moving forward with Ed Redd? I'm a yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I saw a thumbs up from Stephen Mack.
I'm a yes.
Okay, Tamika?
I can't blame it on mute. I came off of mute, and I'm just still. I will, I will abstain at this time.
Okay, did I hear a yes from Jason?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's the majority there, so we can bring it up for new business.
Do you?
I'm sorry, action items or when we need to renew it, right?
Oh, the renewal, renewal is now, I think. Am I right? Yeah.
So we'll have to go on the next agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, do you need to vote on it? I mean, for, at this cost?
I just need to be transparent.
Okay. And this, and I just want to note, this was invoiced June second. I don't know if it makes a difference if it's a little bit later, and we can certainly vote on it the next time, that's fine.
Okay.
Is this our second look at it? I feel like it's come up before, or no?
It's going to be discussed last week.
Okay.
We wanted Kristy to be able to, yeah, our last time to be.
Yeah. We've had kind of an eventful couple of meetings, though. And also, I was ill, I had to step out, so. That's right, okay.
Okay, so next, we have topics for future agenda items. So what is the budget and the adoption of the budget hearing? That's a different meeting, though, right? That's at the beginning.
Is that, that's correct, isn't it, Mary, that we'll have it?
That's the levy hearing, right? Maybe that's the levy hearing.
Are we, are you referring to the first meeting in September? Yeah. The, there is nothing related to the budget scheduled to be presented at the first meeting in September. At the second meeting on September sixteenth, we would hold the public hearing on the budget.
Good.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so that'll be the, and then we have the Ed Redd action that we just discussed. That's all we have for that meeting. Now, that's right now, I would say, don't get all too excited that it's going to, that there's nothing on the meeting, but that's all we have at the moment. And then I do just want to comment that we do have policies coming. I don't think that we'll need to do a policy meeting as soon as the next meeting, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Do we have an equity meeting in between this meeting and the next?
Yes, we have one scheduled for August twenty-sixth.
I would be interested in hearing the equity perspective on the budget, if we think about the budget as a declaration of our values, kind of like we did with the reopening plan. You know, so just something that maybe the board says, hey, equity committee, what's your take? Are there any, any blind spots that we have in terms of an equitable budget?
Sounds like you just built the next agenda.
None. I think Stephen and, oh, sorry.
Lynn, we had, we, our committee was deciding if we were meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, that's true. And I think you've gotten some feedback already that we may not be, knowing it's, you know, the first school, and yeah.
Okay. We can take, we can take offline, you know, is that something even later, you know, that we should still talk about, so.
That's a great point, Kristy. I do like that lens and perspective.
Yeah, it can just be, so when you think about it like this, the, you know, we have this whole list of topics as a part of our, for the equity committee, of different constructs that we want to be looking at. We can include the budget in that, you know, it wouldn't necessarily affect a vote on the budget this year, but just that it's a, one of the pieces that we're looking at, so that, that would make sense that way.
Yep. Cool. I think Stephen and I are looking for some guidance for the community engagement, the next iteration of that, so Stephen and I, I don't want to speak for you. Is that something that we'll be ready for at that point?
I would think so, yeah. I would agree.
And then I know, oh, go ahead.
We want that as a, a new business item for discussion?
Well, are we going to be a superintendent's committee? Are we a board committee? I'm wondering, does it matter? And then what, so I, I'm curious if that's a discussion we do, we have as a board report, that doesn't feel like board report, but we've intentionally kept the team separate from the community engagement committee, looking at the team more as a pilot because of the parameters around committees. So I'm curious where we want to go from, with that.
Okay, this is a topic for discussion?
Yeah, that'd be great. And then we also approved, or there were three of us that wanted to talk about strategic planning in a special meeting, and we changed that focus because the reopening plan was more important and urgent at that point, but we, we do need to come back to the strategic planning process.
So do you want, do you want that also to be a new business topic?
If the board wants to do, to cover that as new business, we can do that. I don't know if you want another, a special meeting. Again, not sure where, where that fits and where you would like to go with that.
Well, it seems like it's just a, I'm thinking that this is a board topic to discuss what it is you're hoping and timeline and all of that, right, because I've already kind of laid out some possibilities for you. And so I don't, I'm not hearing the need for a special meeting necessarily. It sounds to me like it's just a, a discussion.
An update?
Well, it's an update if I'm providing you information.
No, no.
Discussion. And I don't, I don't have updated information for you in any meeting, I wouldn't think at this point. But my understanding was that the hope was that, that the board would be discussing what your hopes were in terms of timing and where you want to go, and, you know, we moved in the direction, you know, we purchased.
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange, and.
So update, poor choice, choice of words. Yes, discussion specifically around what the process is and how thought exchange fits into the larger process.
Sure.
Budget, what are, do we have a budget? Do we want to spend money on this or not? The benefits of it, I know we're in the middle of COVID, so does it make sense to pursue it right now? Will it give us the, the direction that might provide additional unity and, and kind of get our heads out of COVID a little bit so that we can move beyond it? Again, I'm not sure where the rest of the board is on that, if it's a discussion, or I'm happy with either, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, we just put it on as a discussion at this point.
Okay.
Dr. Glickman, did we want to have anything out there to further discuss a student advisory board?
Um, we can. I think, I guess I have wonderings about whether that's a discussion for now, or if that's the kind of thing that could potentially, I guess I don't want to presuppose what comes out of strategic planning necessarily, but it's just interesting to be talking about those two things at the same time.
Right.
Or, or because it was a goal of mine, prior to even thinking about strategic planning, I could outline a little bit about what my thought, you know, what my thoughts were that kind of were outside of the board, and then the board might say, and here's, and let's add in the board, and here's how we could do that. So.
I like that approach.
Okay, so, so what I think I'll do is just provide. Oh, my goodness. My Sonos is talking to me. I don't know what it's going to do.
She disappeared.
Something happened there.
Move your line.
Danger, danger, danger.
Make this stuff up.
No.
See if she, give her a second to see if she comes back in.
Lynn, you're muted.
You're on mute.
Yeah. It just, it made me, I couldn't even just turn off my mic. I had to, I accidentally left the call. We have a Sonos machine, you know, it's whatever, I know, not know what it was going to say to me next. So I think what we were saying is that I was going to, I can provide you with just kind of a little bit of a rough idea. I'll talk a little bit with our middle school principals about it, and I'll bring a rough idea to you, and we'll go from there. How does that sound?
Great.
Okay. See, I told you we were going to have things at the next meeting.
There you go.
Okay.
Uh, so the next will be public comments.
Yes, I have two. The first, from Denise Potter, wonderful work with the supplies. Thank you. I would like, I wanted to agree that this is fabulous, that this, that is a fabulous job done organizing what sounded well thought out. Second public comment from Rachel Khan, Gurnee School, I have, I hear have figured out a way for kids with IEPs to have in-school learning so they can get the therapies they need. Can D forty-six figure out to help these kids? Not all kids can learn from e-learning. What happens with the kids with digression in education and in therapy? Kids with special needs need hands-on therapy schedule. Even if in learning for those kids was to, was two days a week, it's better than nothing. Not everything for the typical student, D forty-six has to think with, think of the special needs students and their families as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next we have, we need, we're going into closed session, is that right, Dr. Glickman?
That's correct.
Okay, so I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
McCroy?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Okay, everybody should have a link in their email for the closed session. We'll take a quick break and we'll meet up. Who's, Dr. Glickman, who's going to be in there besides you?